Welcome, everybody, this evening. I want to kick off the meeting and welcome our new trustees, Mr. Turley and Dr. Hendricks and Mr. Lewis. So with that, if you all please stand and under our flag.
The flag of the United States of America. Intuitively published for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And joining us tonight, a few people, and we have our auditors here, so welcome. And Ms. Coggins from the community, so welcome. We also read our mission statement. Dodge City Community College provides a student-oriented learning environment where students can achieve their educational, personal, and career goals. And at this time, if anybody would like to approach the podium and address the trustees, you may do so at this time.
Thank you for this opport- is this on?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for this opportunity to allow visitors from the community to address the Board of Trustees, and I also want to thank all of you who have run and are representing our community here on the Board of Trustees. It's certainly appreciated. What I wanted to address tonight is the School of Cosmetology, and it's such a wonderful service to our community. It not only allows students a pathway to being cosmetologists, but many of the students over there are taking this and then as they work as cosmetologists, they're able to earn an income wherever they may go in that respect and continue further education. So I'm so pleased we have that. And it also allows people in the community to have affordable cosmetology care, and so that's really appreciated. My concern and why I'm here tonight was you no longer have the evening or the Saturday classes, therefore you no longer have the evening or Saturday services, which many working individuals used. They could, I believe, Thursday's the only night that the School of Cosmetology is open and only till 5:00, and that does not allow people who might not get off work till 5:00 or 5:30 to utilize those services. As you continue looking at things, I would encourage the Board of Trustees to consider maybe bringing back the evening and night classes, because that also affected a lot of students who were working full-time and they were able to take the classes at night and evening, and now so that's not available. So from the viewpoint of being a member in the community who uses the cosmetology school here on a pretty regular basis, I would like that to be something that you might want to consider. And then there were a couple of other things I'll address. It appears that you can't change the temperature in the building over there. It has to be changed from someplace else, like they can't go and adjust the temperature in there. Lots of times it's awfully cold in there. So that might be something you'd like to address with your engineering staff. And check out, you might want to update the ladies' bathroom there. So again, thank you for giving me a few minutes to speak on behalf of the community and those of us that use the School of Cosmetology. My thanks again for all of you serving on this board and keeping our college moving forward. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Coggins. We'll definitely take those to heart and look into it.
Good evening. I'll take off my college attorney hat, put on my Dodge City A's baseball cap as president of the A's for this moment. Most of you here are familiar with the Dodge City A's. It's collegiate baseball team that plays here in Dodge. We bring athletes from all over the country to play here in the summertime, and we're beginning our 14th summer this year. And it takes a lot of people to make that work, and we're very fortunate to have so much support from the community. Tonight, I'd like to focus on the support we receive from Dodge City Community College. We use the college bus to transport our players to and from games, sometimes out of week. Justin Hergert's our main guy. He also does a lot of other things for the A's. When we first started, we used to take vans, and our coaches would drive the vans. And of course, oftentimes, they'd be driving home late at night with a bunch of ballplayers. Always felt a little bit uncomfortable with that arrangement. And I remember one night, we were probably in our third season, and Coach Stevenson was our coach, and he called me, and it was probably about 1:00, and they were coming home from Wichita. And he said, "We had an accident. Everybody's okay." And of course, you know how you feel. And he said, "We hit a cow." And I said, "No, you hit a deer, right?" He said, "No, we hit a cow." I said, "Where were you when you hit the cow?" "They were on the highway, and some cows had gotten out, and they hit a cow." And it pointed out, you know, just how, what we were asking of these guys, to leave early in the afternoon, coach a ballgame, and then drive home at night. So working with the college, we now use the big bus. And Justin has been instrumental in that. And he, when the players leave town, Justin's at the wheel. I relax. He's going to take care of them until they get back, and I will not be relaxed. So I just would like to recognize Justin and thank Dodge City Community College. In a program like this, and some of you have been involved with programs like these, you really count on a lot of moving parts to make it work. You lose one moving part, and you're in real trouble. And so we're very appreciative of what the college does for us. So I say thank you to the college as a whole. Justin, we have a little pmental for you. If you can look just like the players, have a Dodge City A's duffel bag, if you'd come up here, I'd like to give that.
That A's isn't for Astros. Just make sure you make that.
For Astros, for the athletics.
Can you guys turn around, please? Astros. Can you turn around?
There you go.
Get away from the picture.
Love it. Do one more, a little bit closer over there. Thank you.
For Justin Lee, Justinson, Justin does our I score. He reports back to me everything went wrong on the road. He gives me the itinerary so that we make the plans, which I don't have to worry about. And he is just a valuable asset and a wonderful guy. I thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like a suitcase. It's a picked up one.
For the road trips. That's a bus.
Due to the weather, I'd like to take liberty to adjust the schedule, and I'd like to hear from our auditors next, because they drove in from Hutchinson. I'd like to get them on the road as soon as possible. So, Dr. Forgie, would you please introduce our guests?
Yes. Tonight, we have from the firm of Swindle, Jansen, Hawken, Lloyd, Scott Lloyd, and Christina Henson. And I want to express my appreciation to them. This is a perfect year that we have used new auditors. Even if you've been at the college for a long time, and changing auditors gets a difficult situation. Well, we have new auditors and new staff this year, so it made it even more difficult. And then add in the system that we had, the accounting system. I'm sure that the auditors had quite the adventure this year, so we appreciate them very much and them. We offered to let them call in tonight because of the weather, but they wanted to present it in person, because this was their first auditor, so we appreciate them taking the time down and coming. And that said, so Christina?
I'm just going to speak just for a couple of minutes here. I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to serve Dodge City Community College, and we did want to be in person. That's just the way we operate. I've done this for 37 years, and there's just something about being in person, face to face. We do want to thank you for the opportunity, Dr. Forgie and the others. It was a challenging year. We won't beat, you know, beat around the bush. Anytime you have a new audit, that's one thing, but then, like he said, new system, new people. And so we're looking forward to next year, but I think we've accomplished a lot this year, and it's really been a great experience. And we do, as I, some of you see me, I come out here when we actually presented to get the audit, and, you know, we do other community colleges, and so it's great to have the opportunity. Now we do three, and so it's great to compare them, see what some people do, you know, that are better than others and vice versa. And so that's good for you, and it's good for us, and it's good for the other colleges. So at this point, I'm going to actually turn it over to Christina to go through the details on the report. I will say, it's a nice snowy night, so you could go home and just wrap up with this around the fire, and I'm sure you'll have a great evening.
Use a disturbing.
Must not be a first. I'd like to echo Scott's thanks. I really appreciate all of everybody's help. They really did a fantastic job in getting with us, and, you know, like I said, a first year audit is just, it's a struggle to begin with, let alone their questions, their new software system trying to be implemented and all of that good stuff. So again, really do appreciate everybody's help. You should have two documents in front of you. One is going to be a safe copy that is the governance letter, and that's the one that I like to start with. Okay? The first couple of pages are just in Word of type language that we include with every audit report that we give. It would talk about any significant estimates that we might have, or if we had any disagreements with the DUDN. It would talk about if we consulted with others, but again, with DUDN, it's just all those various high-level things that if you're curious about it, that's what that stuff would be. Starting on page three, this is where we give our recommendations as we did our audit. And the first one there, which is one of those things that I think that has been kind of in the process over the last couple of years we're working on. What happens is that the student financially, students are reported to a what we call data clearing house, and that triggers their repayment status on their loans. And so what we do is we grab a copy of it, and we go make sure that that status is correct on the, on the system. This year, we had a few students that, once again, that either were not there or their status was not correct. I do believe that a lot of that has to do with training and software, because what has happened is that W flag has to be recorded in that student database. That that's a really small, little, itty-bitty flag to trigger, and so sometimes that can easily get missed. Again, I think with the new software, I think that would be built in a little bit more connected with the various departments that works on that. I've already spoken with your new interim director. They already have a plan in place to go through that, so I do think they are on top of that, and then make sure this will not be a repetition. Any questions on that? Okay? The second one there is whenever we have a prior grade adjustment, something that we find in the current year that actually affected factors, we have to call it prior grade adjustment, and then we have to let you guys know about that. This one is related to property taxes. So in the past, what would have happened is those property taxes that would have been collected and levied would have been considered as a future revenue for a future year, but since a few years ago, we're not changed from a July distribution into a May-June distribution. The levy that's in your budget is actually, majority of it is actually collected in your current year, and so it's available to be used and spent and is in your budget as operating revenue for that year. So it's no longer really considered to be deferred to revenue into your future year. So what we, what you will see is a prior grade adjustment to, in a, essence, put that money back into the operating year that we believe it should be reflective of, and then a receivable that is set up to estimate about what we think you guys would be collecting in October. That relates to all those delinquent taxes that have not yet been collected that really should have been, but, you know, for efforts of your own that could be avoided at that point. So that adjustment, though, was pretty significant in your favor, almost $3.5 million. And it's just, again, it's not so much that the cash wasn't collected or recorded at the time. It was a presentation of when that money is actually recorded. And so that was after discussions with Dr. Forgie, and we believe that that actually should be reflected as well as well. Questions on that one?
Do you understand which, do you understand what she's talking about there?
Yeah, we like her.
Last year, in last year's audit, this was considered a receivable. The auditors last year considered it receivable. Our auditors now say, "No, it's not receivable. You actually collected it in June, and it was in that fiscal year's revenue." And so that's the adjustment that they're making. I kind of wondered that when I saw it last year, but being new and trusting our auditors, I didn't question it. And they've been doing that for several years.
Is there a change in the law or accounting practices that would count for the discrepancy there, the difference there, or just interpretation?
I think it's just a more interpretation by the auditors.
And this would be more consistent with the other firms that you audit?
That's correct. System of the other countries that we do as well.
When you're actually showing and reflecting it, in the year you collected it, and in the year that you levied it.
Which actually is logical.
Your budget in August that you guys approved is calculating with that levy is going to mean what your taxes are for that year, and it's being applied to those expenditures that you're going to spend in that, that year. And then it gets levied in November, and then you collect it in December, January, and May-June, type of thing, and they distribute it to you.
It's your fiscal year.
Yeah. Okay, all right. We did not have any other suggestions or issues that we found, at least not that we felt like to write up. I mean, obviously, the software, we are very pleased to see that they're moving to a newer system. Obviously, it's a challenge to get, to get reports on, not just for us, but for them as well, not being able to dig in the way that they ought to be, and I really think that they'll be much better off. The next part of it is, real quick, just your financial statements. We have here in, so this is for your document, starting on page one, this is where we give our opinion on the support. And I want to be kind of really clear about this part of it. The financial statements, while we do put them together for you, they are technically not our financial statements. They are yours and management's. That's the responsibility that you have. We are supposed to audit them. Now, because we feel like that Dr. Forgie has the ability to oversee this work, and therefore journal entries will understand them and take responsibility for them, that allows us to be able to help prepare them as well and not break that, that independence rule. Because this, putting those financial statements together is considered a non-atest service, which means that it is not an auto service. It's an extra service, even though we've lumped it together with your audit package. But this is, it's one of those things that can get really confusing, because a lot of people say, "Well, that's the auditor's report. It's not our report." The only part that's really ours is these first two pages that gives the opinion on these financial statements. Questions on that? It's kind of a key understanding sometimes. All right. At the bottom of page one, we give, once again, a what we call an unmodified opinion. So we believe that these financial statements are material in all material respects, fairly representing the financial information as of June 30, 2019. The second page there will also give other information regarding the federal funds and the government audit needs data, because there are issued two more reports in the back of the financial statements over the federal funding and single audit piece of that. Starting on page three, this is a management's discussion analysis. So this is, again, another document that, while we assisted putting it together, the ultimate discussions for my management to assist with putting it together. This will give you comparative information between the years in both table and graphic formats. So if you're a visual person, you can, you have your numbers there, and if you're a numbers person, you can see, you know, kind of the size of that. I will also want to kind of point out as we go through this, this presentation of financial statements is very different from the one that you would have received here. So a year ago, you would have had what we call a GASP 34 model, which gives you just tons of data at each fund level, and then you roll it up to this modified level, and then you roll it up to a full accrual level. So it gives you all this different information. But the college, under what we say called GASP 35, is allowed to present their financial statements more like a business, because it's considered as one entity as a business-type entity. So what you will see here tonight is a format that I think will, you'll like a lot better, which is straightened. Here's the college overall as whole. Then we do have some additional information in the back that issues some individual fund basis information, but I think overall, it's much clearer presentation and not anywhere near as confusing. It's just one straight roster square of where the college is at. So with that in mind, some of this comparative information might be just a little bit different and skewed, just because we had to try to take prior year of audit financial statements and fit it into this model. And we don't have all the data and all the work papers and all that information, so we did the best that we could with that, and he did the best that he could in helping us with that. But if there's a little bit out of whack, that's probably majority of that's fine. Another key, then we'll just go ahead and flip to page 12. So this is called your statement of net position, and again, this is one of those things that we assume a little bit differently. In the other model, the foundation would have been led into that same information. It would not have been a separate column on the financials. Now, under this model, they are separated out, so you can very distinctly see what's college and what's foundation and what's college. So again, I think it's a lot clearer presentation of that. And again, if you tried to compare last year's beginning numbers to this year's, or ending numbers to this year's beginning, you're going to have a hard time finding that clearly because of that, that presentation change. Overall, though, you can see in your assets, you have quite a bit of cash, a lot of its investments in your capital asset programs. And then, of course, in your liability sections, you have quite a bit of your leases and your certificates of participation and your bonds payable, those sorts of things. The other big number on this relates to what we call the other post-deployment benefits. That is basically based off the action where we report that the college hires to value those healthcare benefits, and so we just take that number from that report and drop it in here. It's kind of an arbitrary number, because it's not really a cash basis, so it's, it's sometimes really hard to put their heads around, because you don't really feel like you owe it right now. But if the college closed right now and you have to close those employment benefits, this is about what that value of that dollar would be. Do you really expect to pay that? Maybe not. At the bottom there, you have your various net positions, and so what those would be, would be like your capital assets. Those are going to show you pretty much the value of those capital assets, plus all the debt that's attached to it right now. And then you have the restricted funds, so those would be things that, like your little education fund, or those various funds that are restricted for those educational purposes. And you have about $4 million, so that is left as unrestricted, that you can choose how you deal with that. Questions on that? And the next, next page is the statement of revenues and expenses. So this is more or less your profit and loss. One big change that you will see with this one is this year, we help them do what is called the scholarship allowance calculation. That is not something that we noticed that we could, that had been done in the past. It is something that is required to be done, and it is something that Nocubo puts out as a calculation, and so we just take that spreadsheet together, fill it in with all the numbers. And then it basically, at the top there, where you have your total tuition and fees, it takes the scholarship allowance out of that. So it's the stuff that, like the Pell reimbursements and those kinds of things that go against that, that you got allowances or credits for against that tuition. And then that also reduces the, by the same, you don't see it here, but in your scholarships and grants expense line, that same allowance is pulled out of that number. Overall, I think, again, you had a pretty decent year. That $3.5 million really helped your, your net asset number, but you still, I think, have a very strong position as we've seen it across other, other community colleges too. Cash flows, I'm not going to go over that, but again, it's just all the changes where the, where their money came in and where it went out, but it's all going to be the same kinds of things that we just talked about. Note disclosures, I'm not going to go over each one of those. Again, if you have trouble sleeping tonight, maybe this is something to pull out and read, but there's all kinds of information in here, anything related to your debt, to your capital assets, to all that, those lovely pension and healthcare benefit disclosures, all that stuff is in there. So anything that you wanted to find out about a certain number on one of those statements, just get a chance, and there's something in here that describes it, talks about it. So then you get, let's go back to that other set of numbers that I was referring to earlier. So I get page 47. So in our presentation, because you have, in this model, you have just this very high level information, it doesn't really allow you to tell all those sort of funds that you have. Sometimes it's kind of important. So what we do is we give you the main budgeted funds that you have, and we give you what is basically your cash basis information. It's what we call the regulatory basis accounting, because that's what the state of cancels requires you to budget off of, and so essentially, it's just your cash in, cash out. And so what you have here is a presentation of your budget and your actual, what you brought in, what you brought out. And you will see that if you flip through any of these, you will not have any budget violations, and you do not have any cash basis violations under the state of cancels law. Finally, if you go back to, starting about page 54, this is your federal audit section. So because you have more than $750,000 in tax link with your student financial aid program, you are required to have a federal fund audit, so it's very specific to the student financial aid program. So on this first page here, you have listed where all the money is coming from and spent on all of your various different federal programs, where they came from, and the dollar amounts. Then the next couple of pages, we give our opinions on that. So we have both an opinion over the internal controls as it relates to the federal funds and compliance as it relates to the federal funds. We did not have any finance on the financial statement side of it or the internal control side of it, but as we already discussed it, we had that funding on the clearing house information, so that is a compliance issue on the, on the federal funds part of the audit. Any question on that? There's a lot of information there, but...
Were you able to use any of the other community colleges that you audit to help take this new program and make better journal entries and stuff on that? Or is that kind of how we are getting from the old system to the new system?
Yes. I think that their, their system that they've moved to is much more comparable to what other community colleges use now. They could have been much more user-friendly. They've already discussed a lot about their chart accounts, so I think they've got that organized and fit to the way that it should be. As far as journal entries go, there's a lot of journal entries that we make to get from the cash basis numbers that they keep their books out to this, to this level. But there, again, I think as the relationship develops, there's a lot of things that I think that the college will be able to learn and take on, and that's something that we try and work with, so that there is more that they see and understand and do. But most of those entries, they would probably never, not never, they could make, but you would have to be really careful, because you have that cash basis and the state of, the state of cancels law that you have to do that, and you have these accrual entries. So in a lot of cases, and we discussed this, and again, this is kind of work in progress that we'll work through, is creating this separate fund out there that houses all of these accrual-based entries, so that it could be tracked and managed within the college, but not necessarily mess up any of the cash basis information that goes on as well.
Thank you.
Any other?
Questions for Glenn or even one, but I know we talked a little bit on, like, page 12, when you look at the total, total current assets with the cash. Has that got all the grant money that we received in that, that'd be on page 12?
A lot of that cash basis, a lot of those cash numbers are held as bond proceeds in trust.
As what?
As bond proceeds. There, there are the, like the gentle bar, we had the gentle bar. So a lot of that cash is not, is not necessarily like bank account cash that's sitting in a checking account ready to wait on. It's a lot more of the stuff that's sitting in your certificates of participation accounts in your, there are these accounts, those kinds of things. You can...
I think his question may be related to the funds on page 54.
Right, that's right.
On the federal funds.
Oh, okay.
He's wanting to know whether those are included on the presentation on page 12.
The federal funds is in the presentation on 12, okay. So those federal funds, those are expenditure-based still, and so on page 54, those are what you spent in those federal programs, okay? And so they get in part within, it's a little bit confusing, but the expenses are spread out, if you will, inside of the operating expense lines. So a lot of it is based in those scholarship lines, but it's not...
Let's use, for example, let's use, for example, the child and adult care program. Does that even go through the general, does that even reflect it on?
It's, it is, but not, but not necessarily in the individual fund that you can see it. It's there, but it's not, it's going to be buried in probably that instruction expense line. If that had been a budgeted fund, you could go back to the budgeted funds and see, see the detail in that, but it's, it's not a budgeted fund, so you don't have that particular piece of it.
Let me ask this question a little different way.
Okay.
As of June thirty-two thousand and nineteen.
Yes.
We show total current assets of fifteen thousand, fifteen million two hundred and eighteen thousand.
Correct.
That's everything.
That's everything, yes. Sorry, yes, it is absolutely everything.
That's everything, all the grants there.
Yes, it is.
State money, federal money.
Any other questions I can answer? All right, well, once again, we really appreciate your time. And if you do come up with questions, we are available throughout the year. We tend to just be a partnership and a team. So we encourage anybody to reach out to us if you encounter issues and not wait till we get out here during the audit. We wanna be proactive and assist the best ways that we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Safe trip home.
Yes, so, yes. Thanks to you for coming out and joining us. And I look forward to next year when we can see the comparables. So that we get things kind of, you know, more, you know, systemized, so.
I've been in this, like I said, for thirty-seven years. And we don't want to throw anybody on the bus for just the way it's presented in the past and that prior period adjustment, there's some things there that have changed quite a while back. So that should have been something that was changed probably about, it's when the state of Kansas was going through all their, you know, how they changed their year-end cutoff. And so that's when your taxes, they used to be due, you know, and distributed for July twentieth. And they moved it back to May tenth. And so that's what, whenever that law changed, that's when that should have changed back then. So again, we're not, I'm just, I'm being very upfront with you. The other thing I wanted to say real quick, and I'll take a lot more of your time, but this is an investment in our time also. We've probably had over fifty thousand more than what we're gonna get paid. And some firms would charge you that. But we feel like it's a long-term investment for us to be a part of Dog City Community College because we know the first-year audit is a challenge. This one brought a little more because of your new computer system. We're excited about that because some of the old system, was it ninety-six? Like ninety-six, there were some things that we could not do. With this new system, there's gonna be some flexibility, even with the year-end cutoff and some of the things that happened at year-end. So I'm not trying to brag, I'm just saying, I'm being real with you. Like the other firm that bid against us out of Wichita, where it probably charged you at least half of that or more because of what the systems, you know, brought and they weren't aware of probably when they bid on the job. So again, we're looking forward to this. That's an investment in our client and the opportunity to serve you in the future. So if you do have any questions, please holler, we're here. And this presentation, we did this with Cali, we changed this in Cali when we first took over there. And they really like it now because the other part of Gatsby allows this to happen. Was it the Government Accounting Standards Board? And so there's two approaches, and this is the college approach. It should, it should give you a lot more clarity going forward.
How many junior colleges do you do?
We do three right now. And then we do two other private colleges, first in Sterling. We do Hutch Community College, which is a fairly large one. And then we do Cali. And then now you, and there's an opportunity to probably do some more. It's a very specialized area.
No, I'm just hoping if you did it several, we might have you put, marry some comparative numbers up for us versus ours. I know there are three of them. Not that we'd see there, no, we just, you know, how you do, marry that.
I guess this is okay to talk here, I'm not over the mic. But anyway, one thing that we're looking at in our firm, and we have not done in community colleges, we have a data analytics team now. We're about ninety people strong for us. We're not a small firm anymore, we're a little bit larger. But we have this data analytics team. And what we're doing in businesses is we're actually taking the data analytics, it's called geo-fencing. And some of these, and I'm not the data guy to talk about this, but colleges and school districts would be very easy to do once we hit the model built. We're gonna do it with banks because banks got a lot of same numbers, okay? We own part of, my family lives in Sedan, we're gonna use Sedan, First National as an example. And when you get an example, then you can build it and compare it to the other data. And that's when you'll start, I mean, that'll be probably two or three years, two years off probably at least. We wanna get your records in good shape and then we can do the data part of it. But that'll really help, you know, either businesses or governments understand how they compare to others. So, yeah, looking forward to that. I may be retired by the time that. And then they're gonna ask me to come back and do that part of it. Anyway, we appreciate, we appreciate the opportunity to serve you. And again, if you have any questions, holler.
And thanks again for what you've done.
No, that's obviously there. You have your cops. If one's not enough, you can take an iron home.
We have a lot of wood.
Trust me, Louis, I think it's a requirement now that colleges put their audits on their website.
Right.
If you ever wanted.
I just know when you go to the K-Bor site and try to compare colleges, they're not, and everybody's dropping them in the same bucket. You know, same account. So that's what I thought if he's doing five or six and doing them all alike, it gives us something maybe to manage off in the future.
Yeah, the future will probably end up here and there.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So let's go back in the agenda to the approval of the minutes. We have two sets to approve, and I'll entertain a motion. Ready?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, completion of agendas. We have a few additions and some removed. Do I have a motion to approve the agendas as amended or presented? Should say. There is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Agenda has been approved. All right, we'll move on to the reports to the trustees. This is from Student Government Association, so Ms. Graham.
Good evening, Mr. Chairperson, President Nolte and Board of Trustee Members. It is my privilege to stand before you, and I would like to begin by thanking you for your time. I would like to begin with the following club reports. Film Club met for the first time on February, or January twenty-ninth and will begin meeting on the last Wednesday of every month at three-thirty in the Humanities Building. Hope Club started fundraising and plan to do activities during April for sexual assault awareness. SNA finished gathering donations for their fundraiser, determining prices for tickets and prize packages, and will begin to sell raffle tickets soon. And these funds should go to scholarships as well. For the month of January, SGA did the following events. We hosted mocktails in the library and had forty-eight students attend. We had a minute-to-win game and had thirty-two students attend. Bingo in the cafeteria was fifty-six students attended. And we did get a few new board members. We had Jaylene Cole as Activities Chair, Alexandria Aldum for Marketing Chair, and Senia Cavalli for Co-Marketing and Activities Chair. And we are in the process of planning the following events for the month of March. We are planning to do a scavenger hunt in the library, plan a live-action Pac-Man, movies and mocktails in the library again. And thank you for your time, and I look forward to seeing y'all next month.
I have a question. What's Film Club?
So they watch a bunch of different movies and then they discuss them after the movie.
Because I knew none of you have ever seen photographic film, probably.
We actually did, in art class, we did watch one. So I have seen one.
How was the Super Eight?
It was good, we had a really good turnout. We had lots of prizes and different games for them as well.
Are you liking the award?
I'm more into collegiate. I'm an Auburn fan, so if I had my choice, I'd probably get the Saints.
If you can't tell, she's from Alabama.
I'm a Eagle fan, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, thanks, Jessica.
Did you ride your horse today?
Uh, it was difficult.
Did you ride yesterday?
Yes, it was difficult, thank you.
We saw some kids out riding yesterday.
Sounds was nice.
We saw students riding yesterday. We were in a meeting and looked out the window and saw students riding.
The tough ones.
Her horse is too expensive for them riding.
Okay, all right. We'll go on to trustee reports. We'll start with Mr. Lewis.
Well, gosh, it seemed like it's been a long time since the last meeting. But I had the privilege of going around and touring the campus with Dr. Tetrow. And I toured the technical ed. He's told me I can't use the boat tech word anymore, so I'm gonna have the technical ed. But I think one Jan left, but she was there getting, the lady up there, Jan, Jen, right? Was there, the day I was there, getting her nails done. So she does use our facility there. And, but I was really pretty impressed and with all of the technical dudes. Pretty exciting to see as many people work. Had no idea that the cosmetology was that big. Then I go in, I see, I didn't realize we had a diesel program. It's really been pretty good for several years. And, you know, shame on me or shame on us, whatever now. But no, I say I did that and I really, really enjoyed seeing the campus. And I'd like to make another trip to go through one of Jan Ed areas and see the.
I'd be happy to tour with him.
Okay, yeah, yeah, one might wait for a warmer day. That would be, oh, well, then, while I'm on that, I would ask the board, now would be a good time.
Yes.
To move next month's meeting by one day instead of on Tuesday night to Wednesday night. So I don't know if everybody could look.
Is that March or April?
That would be for.
So that'd be the twenty-fourth, you'd like to move it to the twenty-fifth. Not for KU games.
We know it won't be for K-State basketball.
Do they have basketball?
They had a basketball.
No, I apologize for that. That would be, I'd like, see, our next board meeting was scheduled for, well, the one, not next one, April twenty-seventh, is that? Yeah, I'd like to move it to the, let me just say, is it twenty-eighth?
Twenty-eighth.
Yeah, I'd like to move it to twenty-ninth, my bad.
April or March?
That's April. April, move it from twenty-eighth to the twenty-ninth. How does it look for you guys?
So if we don't, we got another month, we make that, you know.
I'm fine with that.
Can we limit you if you're there on the twenty-ninth, how many questions?
Yes.
There's a price for this. So far, it's looking good.
Okay.
So let's go ahead and anticipate a move on that to April twenty-ninth. Yes. We all. Do we need to make that an action? Do?
You proved the dates.
We've already proven, so yes, so.
Do you need a motion on it?
I do need a motion.
Make a motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
I think you should bring cupcakes or treats.
Bring cupcakes?
Chocolates.
All right.
I don't have a report.
Okay.
This is my first meeting, I'm gonna wear a report.
This is your chance to speak, the only one you'll get all night.
I'll interrupt you.
Can I tell a story? I have a good friend that, well, he was one of the parents of a good friend of mine, Bob Lampy. He was in construction a long time. His son is Sean Lampy. He's a principal at the high school. Well, Sean's brother got killed in an auto accident. And he had a son, I'm not sure what his name is. But he joined the helicopter program out here when he graduated high school and ended up eating, meeting, ended up meeting his wife in helicopter program. They were both in it out here in Dog City. And now they're in Dallas, and he is an instructor, and she flies a helicopter for a television station. So I thought that's pretty nice.
That's a great story. Thank you.
Good to hear success stories. I did. Thank you.
We had a really good meeting. Dr. Tetrow and Foundation Director Chris Hazelhorse was there with Brian Winter on the, looking into some, developing the ranch management program and really did some brainstorming on that and got some really good ideas. And so I think we're well on our way to making a program that's really good. I mean, Brian Winter's been really more than helping, excuse me, in offering what his facilities will give to us to make it a first-run class program and make us compete with the TCU's. And some of those programs are listed as the top ranch management programs. And so I know Dr. Tetrow's been off and running with those things. I haven't seen a new update on the brochure that. The one negative about the whole meeting was we had the present brochures from the community college, and he passed them out on some of the ag stuff. And the ranch management program had a herd of Holsteins on there. So we had to let them know that we don't run a ranch management program with Holstein, some black Angus, black White. So we just thought we needed to get that updated sooner than later. Otherwise, that just really ruins our credibility. But anyway, great meetings, and I think we've, I, I. Whenever I'm working on patients at my office, I tend to monopolize their time when I have my hands in their mouth. And I have several of them that are in the ranching business. And so I'm always filling them full of questions and telling them, we're looking at doing this. And, you know, just what we had discussed in this meeting was we're trying to get kids to stay in southwest Kansas and maybe get into that line of work. And it was an older couple, they're both in their seventies, still running about two hundred and fifty cow calves. And she said her husband's been down, so she's been out feeding cattle all the time. And she said they have no, they have two daughters, they both got married, went off. One lives in Kansas City and one lives in Milwaukee. And so said they're not sure how much longer they'll do. I said, gosh, I wish we had this ranch manager program going because we had some of these kids ready to grow up and develop. Maybe it'd be somebody you could hire to keep your program going. And, you know, in the future, maybe have them buy into the program or buy it out from you, something like that. And she goes, oh, we'd love to do that because we'd love to be able to see our legacy go on and be transferred to somebody else, even if it wasn't family. So I think there's some great opportunities we're gonna have with this program. And so I'm just really excited about getting things rolling on it. And I attended the basketball games last weekend on Saturday, and the girls lost a really close, tight one. And I know Coach Lowell didn't sleep very good for a night or two because he takes that very serious. And Jacob Ripple did get a victory for the men on the men's side, got the comeback victory. So it was really nice to see a good, and we had a really good student section, a bunch of guys there during the girls' game, and they were really loud. So I can't wait till we get cheerleaders and a band in there. Even if we don't get the acoustics fixed, which we talked about last night, it'll be one place that really rocks.
It's double overtime.
Yep. That's it.
I have been attending the salary committee meeting, the index committee meeting, and we are moving right along with that. And I think you'll be very pleased when it comes to the board with the cosponsoring of everybody that was involved with it. Was able to go to a regions meeting and had the day in Washburn with the letter of intent with Dr. Tetrow. And yes, he does, he walks you a lot. And two and a half, three miles in high heels was not what I thought I would be doing that day. But I did, I know, I'm gonna pack different shoes. Then I have to congratulate our attorney, Mr. Curbs, because last night, his presentation on the Kansas Open Records Act was phenomenal.
It was.
And I really appreciated everything you gave us.
It was great.
Thank you.
And I don't have anything.
I'm gonna start out by thanking you for the nine hours you had last night. No, we had a presentation from Mr. Curbs, we had a presentation from Dr. Forghey, we had a presentation from Dr. Tetrow, we had a presentation from Dr. Adam John. Who else, anybody else? Left anybody else?
It was really good, and thank y'all board for being there. You know, we gotta, we need to do more of those kind of things. You know, I've talked to our two vice presidents about the possibility of introducing you or showing you about how a schedule is made and loans and things like that. I think that workshop would.
I think that workshop would be interesting down the road, kind of let y'all know how, what, what we're doing in that respect. And we had a great meeting today. We have Joe Baumann that's talking to, we've already done our strategic plan, but now we're talking about, about his in strategic enrollment. And we've, we've got our subcommittees together and that was today and he'll be coming back and talking about that. But I'd like for y'all to be able sometime to meet with him and kind of talk about your vision of enrollment. I mean, I gave you the report at, at your desk about the enrollments and this is for the last 10 years and I want you to be aware, you know, some, some have really dropped, some have done a little bit better than others. And so, part of it is I don't want to have a drop in enrollment. I want to make sure that our enrollment does well and that's because that's why we're bringing in our band and our, and our cheer and I know obviously Dr. Tetrow has some really good ideas on things, like our housing to be full and all those kind of things. So, I just, we're gonna be, we're gonna be very serious and we'll try to be very calculated on getting this enrollment up. And along with enrollment, you want to, you want to retain. You know, our jobs are to recruit, retain, educate, and graduate. And so, that's what we're here for and that's what we're all about for students. So, just you be aware of that. On a, on a Saturday note, I just want, I want to make an announcement that, you know, last month, I guess we had Don Webb pass away. And so, I went to that, that funeral and it was really sad he was on the board here. And this, this last week, we had Mike Williams. Mike Williams was Coach Williams' son and longtime football coach and then Mike taught biology for us and he retired here and so his service will be on Saturday. And so, just want to make you aware of that. Thank y'all for all that you do and thank y'all for all the questions. Y'all ask some really good questions. Jim, you asked some really good questions. Trustee Lewis. But anyway, but I think... We've only just begun. But I, I do think that's important for us to be able to ask questions and find out because I want y'all to be aware of what we're doing out here. So, it's very important. So, thank y'all. And Dan, thank you. I mean, we learned a lot about the helicopter program that I didn't even know, so, you know, that's good. Thank you, sir.
I have a, have a couple of things. One, we got a real nice thank you card from Don Webb's family. So, our thoughts and our prayers are still with Don and his family and, and... To our meeting last night, and this was, so everybody knows, it was kind of a new, you know, or, you know, informational meeting for all the trustees and as well as for, really for the new, and to the different things that, that are going on and get people as up to speed as, as rapidly as possible. And one of the requirements that we have is, is we've been challenged to yearly have Kansas Open Meeting Act and Kansas Open Records Act, Act Training, which was brought up and Glenn, I do say that was probably the best, best one we've had. So, thank you. I think that made it very, very clear and gave us a great set of reference material to do. Thank you. And I've, I've been away for roughly three weeks and one of the things that I had, the honor to attend, was training on excellence in board leadership. And these things help and they can kind of bring this knowledge back to different boards that you serve on. But tying into what we did last night and just the great engagement that we had, I want to challenge each and every one of us that we should be looking, 75% of our action or our efforts in the board ought to be looking forward, future looking. 25% in, in the current and in the past. And so, as we embark on the new direction of the college and everything that we, your staff is doing about taking us into the future, and we heard some of that tonight with different things that are occurring in the business office and our technology and how we're getting things up to speed. So, we ought to be, got to be looking at the future and we're doing a great job of that and now it's full steam ahead. So, really excited about the future and what we're gonna be able to accomplish for this college and for Ford County. So, thank you all for all that. Thank you for the energy that you brought last night and I look forward to working with each and every one of you.
So, with that, Dr. Forghey, you have any, any additions to your report?
A follow-up from last night, you did ask about the debt. This is included in our presentations back in, I think, July or August, with the new board members. Hand it out again and I modified it a little bit, make it, make it a little bit more easier and color-coded. The blue are debts that we pay out of a capital outlet fund. Those items that are blue shaken. We were talking about the wall last night. Those were for the old wall.
That you had set up in the budget?
There were some expenditures, some, I guess, made on the old wall. Evidently did fix what needed to be done, but anyway, loans were taken out, amount of 1.17 million dollars and we will pay that off next year. Then going on down, the general operating budget, you can see the, the debt we have in those areas. And I gave you a little bit of history there, starting with 17 and 18 and then going out through the remaining portion of those debts. And you can see when the different things mature there. That's in the, that's in what I would call the salmon color. The yellow, their canary color, the auxiliary fund, that's what we pay for the residential halls, Jackson Hall, Becker and Sheldon. I was mentioning last night that the first two years on, it was the Jackson Hall that we refinanced. And 17, 18, 18, 19, we were just paying the interest on that, which was about $133,000 a loan. Then this year, we are having to pay the principal, which bumped that up from 133 to 318. So, that was a pretty significant loan. And I mentioned last night, I didn't want to significantly increase the fees to our students. So, we'll, we'll dip into the reserve a little bit there, but then we'll continue to go up on our fees. But if we have a full residential hall next year, which we intend to, that, that'll help significantly. And then the lavender, the purple down there is the technology fund and basically what we're just paying out of there is the Genza Bar debt. So, and then the total, grand total down at the bottom, if you look over on the, kind of the right-hand side, through 23, 24, it's a little over 10.5 million and then after that, and most of that's the residential halls, 15.2, just under 26 million dollars is what we've got right now. Now, this was after we refinanced Becker Hall in July. So, the June 30th, if you say, if you did the audited financial statements, it'll be a little bit different, but this is the most current.
Okay. Any questions on this?
Yeah, when we refinance, I don't, you all think you refinance as a four-year time on the Jackson Hall, right? You refinance what Sheldon Hall? And is that basically, would we keep our payments the same, just lower our rate or would you just keep the same term? Yeah, well...
Yeah, we, we lowered the payment there because the rate was 3.59 and we lowered it down to basically 3%. And the payments are about the same. I think we shaved off a year on it, but overall, I think we ended up saving, I can't remember, it was $500,000 or something overall in the interest cost.
So, still same term?
Basically, yes. Yeah, linked to time, yeah.
Right.
And we're gonna look at doing the same for Sheldon this, next year. You asked about grants last night.
Yeah.
Page 54 in the audit will tell you those grants that we have that we really don't budget those things.
Okay.
I mentioned the...
That's 54 on the audit page?
Yeah.
Okay.
I've got a handout here if you don't want to look at it, but it's in your audit. The Child and Adult Care Food Program, I mentioned that one. The Retired Senior Volunteer Program, that's another one. Those are, those are type of grants that we have that I don't really have any general fund, you know, I don't budget those. And so, if you want any more information...
You're talking about page 54?
Yes.
They're all expenditures, is what it says at the top.
But that's basically...
But you have to spend the money.
Spend the money, you get it, it's revenue, you'll get the revenues, but you'll have the expenditure. Well, that's really why we don't budget it because you don't know how much you're gonna spend.
Is that like a pass through then?
Yes, exactly.
Money in, money out.
Very good.
Thanks Kelly. Jane, did you have anything?
No, but Jane, I don't have a report myself, but if you have any questions about the report I submitted, the yes part, and our band director Rodney Chisholm is here and he has some information he would like to share.
Please.
Rodney Chisholm, our band director?
Good evening. As she stated, my name is Rodney Chisholm, I'm the band director here and I'm here to give you a state of the union on the progress of the band round there. First of all, and to formally introduce myself to the board, trustees, I have had a chance to talk with trustee Kathy and every time trustee Reitenberg will see me, he always talk to me. So, I just want to just give a few points on what's going on round in the Fine Arts Building. First of all, I want to talk about my recruitment updates. I, the strategy that I use is I like to come locally, spend two weeks locally and then spend another week away. And so far, I've visited 12 schools here in the southeast Kansas region and a lot of them, when I mention that DC3 is getting a band program, they get extremely excited about it. And so, if you're excited, come on, I need you to come then. So, so that's one of the things that I do. And I've traveled to Memphis, Tennessee, my hometown, and I've visited seven schools out there. And I visited central Arkansas, open Little Rock, Pine Bluff, Conway, trying to slide my way counter to Fort Smith a little bit. And I've, I was able to visit eight to 10 schools out there. And that's bringing the, as of today, I've offered 314 scholarships and 29 have, have returned his commitments so far.
How many?
29. So... This weekend is the KMEA, so, so I wouldn't miss days out of work, Kristy. I'm just messing. But I will, I will, I will be visiting the KMEA this weekend to also get some great students from around the state as well. The next order of business I have is the band uniforms. Because of the quote regulations, I know I have to get three different quotes. So, on yesterday, I had a chance to travel to Wichita. I have it right here, Jane. Vice President Huarda. Okay, so, I had a chance to visit Fruhaus Uniform Company yesterday. You can take one of those and pass it around, sir. And what's going around is a, is a sketch of what the band uniform would look like and what's going that way is a sketch of what the drum major uniforms would look like. So, I got with Justin Wilson at the beginning of last semester, tried to, so I can get pantom, pantom code, so I can get exactly what the school colors actually are. I don't, you know, I understand that, you know, if our colors are in old gold shade, I don't want to walk in here with the lemon gold and everybody's looking at me like, "That's wrong." So, so I got with him and, you know, some of those shades may look weird because of the printer that was used. So, that, that also plays a role in it too. So, the process of it is, once I speak with them, they make a design or what's going on in my head and we try to put it together. Then they will create a, an actual uniform sample that I will get within the next few weeks. I had a chance to speak with, like I said, I talked to Fruhaus on yesterday, back in December, I talked to Stanberry Uniform Company and... This is just a sketch of it. So, and they hadn't been able to digitize anything and Demolin Uniform Company, wait a minute, somebody got my agenda off. So, so Demolin, everybody, it's a copy for everyone, so everybody can have one. Demolin is in the process of working on the sketch as well as the sample. Now, the cost of these uniforms, because in my last place of employment, I was, when I designed the uniforms, I wanted all of this, all of that, all of this, and it turned out to be maybe 700, $800 a uniform and they were like, "Oh, Rodney." So, what I had to do was bring it down cost effective. So, what we looking at right now is these uniforms here, we're looking at anywhere between 450 to 600 dollars a uniform. So, we, and I'm still trying to bring some of the things down on it. So, that's what's going on with the band uniforms. Any questions on that?
How many you gonna need?
Well, my goal at this point, I want to start out with at least 80.
80?
80. That's the goal to start. But I'm, I'm, my overall number is to actually compete with the size that's across the street, which, who are, they are very supportive on what we have going on over here. I, I stay across the street, y'all, just so y'all know. Also, I am also in the process because, oh, and oh, let me go back to recruiting, I'm sorry, I should say this. When I'm out recruiting students, I tend to attract more students on the vocational side than the academic side. So, Dr. Tetrow, you finna have your hands full as far. So, 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 because, you know, one of my, one of my recruitment pitches, one of my selling pitches, is a lot of students may not, they want to pick up a trade instead of an academic major. And you can't get that at a four-year institution. So, but they still want to play their instruments. So, hey, we got you here in DC3, come on out. So, you know, a lot of parents, I seem to be very supportive of what we have going on here with that. Also, another big thing is we entering, you know, we're here in the 21st century, is a lot of students wanting to get into the technical side. So, I was talking to Dr. Huarda about it and currently I'm writing a program for a music technology, or recording, getting an associate degree in that. So, and which was a minor of mine back in Arkansas. So, we're working on that as well too. That's, that's the recording studio and things like that. I saw behind the stage that there looked like there was one that just needs to be updated. So, which works out best. All we need is a curriculum and the bodies for, which we're gonna have. And one of the other things I would like to discuss are when these students get here, they need something to play on. So, I am currently in talks right now with the Con Selmer Instrument Company as well as Yamaha and Jupiter to get the three quotes that are needed to get instruments going. Now, from the past, I have worked with Con Selmer before and they have a leasing to own program that goes from three, no, excuse me, four to seven years. And you just make, you know, a payment a year, depending on how much we get. And because if you order so many from them, they will also cut costs and discounts and things like that. They, I just, the way that they set it up, you tell them what they want, they will present the proposal and then I could present it to you as well as my vice presidents and Dr. Note. So, and I'm trying to see if Yamaha and Jupiter would do the same thing. Those are the top three instrument companies. There's, there are several out here that are very cheap, but we want quality. And finally, I would like to talk about one of the things that I do as far as recruitment efforts and boosting the school. Where every Sunday from 12 to 3 at the radio station, I host what we call Cump Talk and some smooth jazz radio stations. And during, during this, I talk about, I announce events that's going on on campus as well as the community, campus service, athletics, academic calendars, different opportunity, scholarship opportunities. I highlight departments and I also highlight two to three different majors a week. And I read, just so students or whoever's listening can know exactly what we have to offer here on the campus. During the second hour, the one o'clock to two hour, I have what I like to call discussion hour and I will pick a topic and be a Facebook Live. I read just the comments and things like that, that people like to feedback. That's what I like to do. And then when we leave, I have to give a shout out to you guys for all the work that you do and a word of encouragement with a poem and some kind of motivational quote. And I think that's it. So, thank you guys for having me. Any questions for me?
Yeah, what's, it's kind of open-ended, I know, because you're offering scholarships, you don't also go take them, but what's your goal for number of students? Do you have a...
My goal actually at this particular point, like the overall goal is two hundred and ten. That's the overall goal, but as of year one, I'm shooting for at least eighty. Um, and it's great that uh, trustee Hendrick said that once we get the band going, cause we gonna rock.
I, I like the fact that you looked at your watch on how many you're gonna get this year.
Oh, no.
How, how much can we, uh, you have an estimate on what an instrument will cost per student? Five hundred dollars, thousand dollars, what will it cost for an instrument?
Well, our instruments vary, uh, so I mean, um, depending on what we get, that's, we can get a, a piccolo or flute for, let's say, maybe six hundred dollars. But then when it's time to get the sousaphones, the big tubas, you know, they have to cost ten. So, um,
The trombone?
Trom- trombones, mm, they range from different, you can go from anywhere from eight hundred to maybe fifteen, sixteen. Um, the concept that I'm going because I like these uniforms and as you can see how the gold and the white actually accents a little, I wanna go all chrome instruments. And it looks good in the light. So, and those are gonna be cheaper than the gold ones.
You might only get one sousaphone.
Just one. But we can sell some donuts.
How about a drum line?
Drum line, so if, if we decide to go with the, this Con Selmer, the instruments we will be using will be uh, Ludwig instruments. We gonna miss the drum line, Dr. Nolte, gotta get it, cause when the, when the freshmen, everybody come back second or third week in August, we have to do the first pep rally and you gotta go live. Any questions?
Oh, I would like to say to you that this sounds wonderful and also say, when you look at these instruments, you mentioned, you know, every little twirl and swivel costs more and more and more, don't go so cheap that they go good, do what you want.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I mean, I, I can think pretty large now, I'm trying to tell you.
She's riding the, she's riding the chain.
Oh, oh, yes, oh, yes, we really do.
I just wouldn't wanna go so cheap that they're not attracted.
Yes, sir.
When it comes to the uniforms, um, how, how do you know like the sizes and stuff like that and to get ordered and then these are ones that stay with the college or stay with the student, uh, tell me how that works?
Well, they will, they will stay with the college and we would have to have a storage area and they will be used until the time to get some new ones, usually anywhere between seven to maybe ten years, depending on the wear and tear. Um, as far as sizing though.
Type environment for the storage?
Sir.
Climate control type storage, it's, it's.
Yeah, yes, sir, well, uh, this is, this is the type of uh, fabric that we will be using for that, that is what, what they call uh, flex. And flex, it works against the type of, the, the uh, the climate. If it's real hot, it's good, it breathes, it helps the body who's wearing it cool. If it's like feeling like it is outside, then it, it can warm them up, you can actually stretch that. And we, I needed to get that because when we marching and doing splits and things like that, we gotta make sure we're not gonna rip the uniform.
So you're gonna have to have a lot of extras just, just for the sizing, right?
Well, yes, sir, the way that, well, the way that that naturally works, the uniforms are usually a kind of one size fits all, I know with, 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 with Fruthoff. They have, um, cause I hadn't met with the other two companies yet, like in person, but then Fruthoff, they, he showed me even yesterday when I went through the factory, that the uniforms have something in there, it's almost like a self-healing, healing kind of thing. Where if you run into a person with long arms, they can bring it in and they will fit versus, you know, a person with short arms or short legs and for the penis legs and things like that, the only thing that the students will be responsible for on their own would be their spats and gloves.
Dan and I wanted to know one size fits all?
Yeah. Yes, Dan, we got one for you too, doc.
That's fit her too.
She gonna be alright.
She's a major rep.
I was just about to say, we gonna get her, man.
Say, we'll both be able to use the same uniform though.
Is there a, I, I'm, I'm going a little bit against what Maya said, uh, and thinking about budgets and finances. Is there any way on some of these instruments more expensive? That there's a secondary market like a, a K-State banner, somebody's wanting to replace an upgrade that might have a few minor dings or tin center or something like that, they ever trade those into some of those companies and there would be something like in order to really get things rolling and started?
Well, I've seen individuals who have done that, but I, I don't think K-State knows they're the same shade of purple. And that would be a problem.
I'm not talking about uniforms, I'm talking about instruments.
Oh, oh, instruments.
A ten thousand dollar sousaphone, if we can't afford that, we need to get three and, and uh, you know, and they have uh, three that they're wanting to upgrade and replace and.
Here's what I do know, these drum and bugle corps out here, like the Carolina Crown and the um, the Blue Devils and the Madison Scouts and individuals like that, these ju- these instrument companies actually, they get a new set of instruments literally every single year.
And they're sponsored by them.
And they actually sponsor, but they, but they sell the instruments that they already ha- that they have used the year before, so I can actually look into some of that.
There's three I'm just looking in that secondary market.
Yeah, a, a lot of those drum and bugle corps do that.
So of the twenty-nine you got signed, how many would you say is local, out of state?
Uh, I, I, you got me on the question, I can't answer right now.
So would your goal to be fifty-fifty, seventy percent local, thirty percent out of state?
Well, that's me, that's, I want, cause I believe in taking care of home first, so uh, I wanna go somewhere maybe seventy, thirty if possible. Seventy being Kansas.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I, I wanna, this is, this is our ground, everybody who comes in, I'm even trying to grow my dog, City Mustang. So, so, e- 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 everybody who comes in, this is, this is, this is our area, this is our town, this is, you gotta adapt to us, not the other way around.
So we're gonna have like, you know, we're gonna have the marching band, we're gonna have uh, pep bands for basketball, we're gonna have like a ja- jazz ensemble, little stuff like that going on?
We gonna have all of that.
Okay.
Because uh, I'm a jazz player myself, so I gotta make sure I have that and uh,
And what you play?
Um, the greatest instrument that's ever been invented.
Saxophone?
Of course. Oh, yes, oh, yes, also, uh, let me, let me announce this, um, I have a date set for April the twenty-second. I will be giving a concert over there in the Little Theater, so you guys can come hear me play. Other than the national. Yes, it's a faculty recital.
Try to get as many as a cheer coach, he's already come back to me and told me he's up to twenty-two.
Uh, well, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna top him for it.
Game on.
Game on. I'm gonna say it's tears, I'm competitive.
Rodney, I think this is all great news, so we're excited.
Thank you, sir.
We're excited, so thank you.
Very good job, Rodney.
Bev, did you, would you have anything?
Tonight.
Out tonight, okay, so let's, let's take a ten-minute break. All right, well, you're, we are now back. Order, order. Kristy, you have the floor.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, battle the bands.
Okay, I'll try to um, hurry through this, I know everybody wants to get home in the weather, so first of all, thank you for letting us have this edition and for your patience while Glenn worked through the contract, um, I also wanna thank Glenn for stopping his other priorities and reading through these contracts, I really appreciate it. Um, before we get into the contract, I thought I'd give you a little bit of background information about why I'm presenting this system to you, so what you have in front of you, um, is just a kind of a breakdown, I just wanted to show you and this is very brief because nobody wants to read too much, so just bullet points of kinda how we do things now and how outsourcing our payroll and our HR system will look if we do change it. So, right now, we're completely paper-based, we are completely manual data entry. All of the audits that we submitted, all the reports we submitted to the auditors that are in your guys' um, audit report, that was my payroll supervisor and myself had an Excel spreadsheet typing all of that in for the most part, um, other than what IT could pull through the system, so that's kinda where we're at. So, um, just to kinda go over it, so currently in our, in our, my department, we're a staff of four, there's myself, an administrative assistant and two payroll um, clerks, one's a supervisor. When we do employee recruitment, uh, I advertise those positions on our NeoGov system, which is our staffing recruitment system. Um, and as you can see on the consideration form, that costs us eleven thousand dollars a year to have that software and so that does online applications, it does advertising, um, we do applicant rating and tracking and I can also schedule interviews through there. Um, there's some other software bonuses through there, but that comes at an additional cost and it's already a pricey software, so it's pretty basic for us. Um, with that, I can post jobs on Indeed, on Monster, on Facebook, on LinkedIn. When employees uh, apply for those positions on those websites, I get emails rather than submitting it into our database and so then I have to then data entry them into our system. So like Dr. John, uh, you guys heard about how high of a demand his positions are down in Arizona because of the population, he got over two hundred and thirty emails or whatever it was, well, my staff had to data entry all two hundred and thirty applicants into our system. So it's kinda where we're at there, um, versus if we go to ADP, if you guys approve this tonight, then if we go to ADP, once I advertise on their website, they actually automatically put it on those websites for us. You can apply online and it plugs you automatically into our system and it'll take you straight to that link, so there's just a time saving. Then with onboarding, um, I was gonna count, I was gonna count all of the pages for you guys in our employee packet or just bring one so you could see it, but I decided not to. It's completely paper and so if you look at um, the stats that I kinda pulled from our IT department on our onboarding, since July one of two thousand eighteen, my staff has onboarded three hundred and thirty-three employees. So that is between full-time, part-time and student workers and then I tried to average about our time that it takes, so to sit down with a full-time employee, whether that's faculty, administration, program, technical or classified, it takes us about two hours of our time that they're in our office in front of us, that we go through the packet one by one, we watch the training, well, we don't, but they watch the training videos. Um, the fact that I got it on an iPad last year was advanced, I had a VHS before then, so we purchased some new training videos and did some things like that, yeah, I have like a special computer that plugged into the VHS, it was a lot, so IT got rid of that for me and they put it on an MP4, so that was progress. Um, takes about an hour to do part-time employees, whether that's an adjunct or part-time, um, hourly and then obviously we have students. Because we're a two-year institution, obviously those students, it's constant every semester and so we have to do the data entry, so that means sitting down with a student, oh my gosh, what is a W four, what is a K four, what am I filling out, why I don't know my social, you know, what's an I nine, I don't have my social security card. So you sit down with them, you walk them through it, then we data entry them into the system. Um, our onboarding right now too, then I take all of that paper and I type you into the system on our insurance, our capers, uh, our short-term disability and so on and so forth, so it's all completely manual. Uh, if you approve us to go to ADP, uh, part of the connection carrier, which is one of the options that I asked for, it's in the pricing, they will actually connect with those outside sources and then they will automatically enroll the employees. So also the onboarding is that if trustee Lewis is a new employee two days before his start date, um, he can, I can actually just send him a link and on his own time, uh, he can at home with his spouse, go through the W four, the K four, the insurance, he can watch his training videos, he can do all of it online by himself. He's data entering his own information, his address, his emergency contacts, uh, his insurance elections, he can elect which fringe benefits are, 403B plans, things like that, all from there, set up his direct deposit before he even starts at Doc City Community College. And he can watch all of his training videos, so it takes no time out of our day once we have the setup. Obviously, we're a small enough campus, I'll still be meeting with them, but what this does is give me an opportunity to do training, so Dr. Nolte can attest to this because him and I read every single exit packet of employees that leave, the number two things we see on every single exit packet, almost, almost everyone, is um, our flaws basically is uh, lack of communication and poor training and that poor onboarding process, cause once I get through their paperwork, I turn them loose to their supervisors, but you know, they don't know that you can find our board policies at dcthree.edu/policies. They don't know how to set up their voicemail, they don't know how to put in a marketing request or things like that, again, I try to help with that and we make ourselves available, but when we just spent two and a half hours going through a paper packet, I think, one, I scared you and two, you're sick of looking at us. You know, you wanna talk to your supervisors and get to know, so this way we could do more hands-on training that'll actually help employees rather than going through just the paperwork. Um, they'll also do the timekeeping and the accrual process, so right now we use a system called Time Clock Plus. It's about twenty-two hundred dollars to two thousand dollars a year. Um, it's a limited system, it does not talk very well to J one and so either way, we're gonna have to get rid of that system. We're having a lot of troubles with it right now, as you guys know, we're running, we just ran our second payroll today out of the new system and there's a lot of issues, a lot of things got missed with the hours calculating and we're having to rerun a lot of checks. So either way, we're gonna have to change our timekeeping system, um, but if we go to ADP, then we can house it there and we don't have to pay for anything extra and then that'll, that'll process directly onto their timekeeping, their accrual processing and then onto the paychecks. So um, obviously then the payroll processing, they will take over pretty much all of it, so we'll obviously have a little bit of data entry to set up all the new employees. Uh, once they're in there, they will actually process the payroll, they'll pull in the hours and employee can go on, if you wanna change your direct deposit in the middle of the month, if you wanna change your W four, your exemptions, anything like that, you as an employee will log on to your ADP account and do it yourself. We get an alert that there's a change and we can do, we can run our edits personally, but otherwise, we're pretty much just reviewing for errors and hitting submit and they take it from there, they'll pay our monthly taxes, our quarterly taxes, um, they'll also take care of our quarterly audit reporting, which I don't know if anybody's aware how much reporting we do, but it's a lot. And they'll take over pretty much all of it, they have a hundred and fifty standardized reports already in their system and then they have um, a copyright software that they call their Field Grabber. It's a program that they created internally within the company and so it's a report builder that literally you can just click and gla- click and drag which parts of the employee homepage you wanna build a report out of and just change the columns and it'll just run, it'll plug in automatically for you. So it's time-saving there as well and then that'll save the auditors, as you heard, they had a lot of issues getting some of our information, so we can just submit those reports directly to them, they can help us build, tell us what columns you want and we'll just design it for you. So that'll come with the software as well. Um, and again, you can see some of the audits and reporting, I don't have to go into details for you, but you can see all the reports that we do regularly. And then the big one that I'm excited about too is our employee evaluation and training system, I talked to you a little bit about training. I have a lot of ideas to do some, it's something I haven't had time for, so I'm looking forward to adding more trainings, monthly, annually, things of that sort. I know Vice President Tame and I would like to do Title IX trainings more frequently, I'd like to do the anti-harassment annually, um, things of that sort. But also the evaluations, right now it's all by paper and I send them out and enter campus mail or email and I just hope and send good vibes and I hope that the supervisor sends them back, hopefully, and I send as many emails as I can, please send them back, please send them back. So it's not a very good process, I can do all of this online through ADP, I can send notifications to the supervisors and the employees like, hey, your evaluation's due, hey, your evaluation's due and they'll, kinda, they can do it all electronically. So that's kind of where we are and where I would like to go. Um, and then I also gave you a breakdown of what ADP looks like in action, if you guys wanna look at that as well, feel free. Um, more fireside reading with your audit report, I think. Um, so if you wanna read through that, absolutely. Otherwise, what questions can I answer or I can turn it over to Glenn for the contract?
If we're gonna jump from VHS to this, is that too big of a jump on one time or not?
Yeah.
No.
I think it'll be good.
If we do this, then you could actually talk a little slower and not have to worry about trying to get everything in.
I do talk.
That'll give you a lot more time, Kristy, I'm, I'm looking forward to that, so.
Yeah.
I think she took lessons from you.
Yes.
You don't have a question.
Yes, of course.
Will your employee be able to look and knowing how much uh, either sick days he has left or personal days, we're now instead of calling you up?
Yeah, so accrual calculations right now are on TCP, um, they're not accurate right now because of the conversion to J one, they didn't match. So my payroll supervisors, we just got payroll up today, so we're behind, we need to manually go in and fix everybody's now, which is really fun. But they will process that for us, they'll take care of all of our accruals. So, and we'll actually, she said we can, and I'm not getting my hopes up, I think this is wishful thinking, but she says I can just send our board policies to her and they'll set it up. I don't see that happening, I'm sure we'll have to do some data entry and set them out correctly.
Totally, totally shocked you haven't been doing this.
Yeah, I just like.
Yeah.
I will tell you, I, I compared the numbers to what we're paying, we're about the same amount and you're right, right in line and ADP's the largest company in the with that made the world of this payroll processing.
And I did mention too in the work session, so I wanna make sure I cover all the points I made too, I'm with the department of four, this would, this is to eliminate one of our positions for sure. Um, we have a hard time filling our payroll clerk position, it's just, it's, first of all, it's hard, our payroll's almost a million dollars every month, it's very, very stressful, there's a lot going on and so we have a lot of people that don't, it's not what they thought it was going to be and so we have a hard time keeping it filled, we don't pay quite as competitively as some of the area, um, some of our other industries in the area. And so this would be cheaper than, I don't want to say that, this would be more cost-effective than.
And offer a lot more services.
And it'll offer a lot more services and so the plan is to eliminate the payroll clerk now, uh, that position, it's vacant right now, my payroll clerk had to move for family reasons, so it's actually vacant. Um, and then eventually, once we get this implemented and we're up and running, then we could reevaluate even further and, you know, figure out, you know, what do we need, especially cause all the files will be kept electronically moving forward, so right now, my, I was telling Dr. Nolte, my biggest concern is if there's only two of us or, you know, getting rid of this position, how are we gonna file everything, well, if it's electronic, then, you know, we, we won't have that problem, so. Any other questions?
Do we back it up as well as they back it up or is there a large backup system on this?
Yeah, so I did ask that question, so it's cloud-based, which, did we figure out, Dr. Forgy, is J, is J one cloud-based also? Yeah, so, so it's cloud-based, um, and we wouldn't have to pay J one any extra funds to do any type of integration back and forth. forth. The only type of integration they'll have to do is that they'll have to, basically when we pay people, they have to move that money back into our current accounts. And that'll happen, they already have it set up, they have other customers that use Ginzabar, and so they'll have to access our chart of accounts. And so I'm sure I'll be working closely with our comp controller, Jessica West, to get that set up and get the chart of accounts over to them and get everything to line up. But once we do that, it'll all be stored. And then my biggest concern too is, you know, if we get away from ADP, you know, then what happens to our data because we have, you know, record-keeping guidelines and compliance issues of our own, so we would get to store all of that data.
So do we do any in-house backup as well as with them?
Um.
Because, I mean, I just got through doing a big HIPAA update and evaluation and stuff, and they're recommending that not only we have a cloud base, but we have, like, we do hard drive backups and keep stuff in a safe, just because they said you should have two backups just for anything like that business-wise, because they're just way, way the hackers and everybody or anything, they're already ahead of everything, and if they tie into that company, you know, the Russians or the Chinese get into that, and we don't have a separate source to do that, then we're basically shut down and being payroll and all those kind of things. So we, we do use a cloud base and we use.
A backup.
Backup, every day we back up our stuff every day, so we know where we're at. I just was curious.
Dr. Forgy, do you know more about that, especially how we're doing J1? I'm not an IT person.
J1 will be backed up to the cloud. I have not heard Mike say that we'll be backing up any other.
So it might be something that I can, I can ask a rest.
Yeah, I, 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 that was new to us. We were just kind of doing it because we went from the old-fashioned backup before we went with the cloud stuff, we just kept doing it. Just in case they ever got compromised, we could, because of patients' charts and x-rays, then I could go with our hard drives and we could get a new computer. We could be working the next day and they were talking about medical and dental offices that got, you know, hacked and, and stuff like that, ran, you had ransomware on them, they couldn't go back into work and see patients and do updates. So if we had a separate system, we can just open it into our own things and, and we could still operate.
Yeah. No, I think that's a great question I'll have to ask, because we did talk a little bit about, well, and we did talk a little bit about cybersecurity and kind of where that liability landed as well, and that's in the master agreement. And Trustee Harshberger, on page seven, there is, it does reference the market surveys. So we would have access to ADP market surveys, which they're one of the, they are the largest data processing company in the country, and so you'll hear a lot, you know, they provide a lot of statistics to the Bureau of Labor Statistics. And so we would, and it looks like, of course, for a little bit of a price here and there, we would be able to access those market surveys ourselves, which is helpful.
It's provided as a service?
It is, and then it, basically some of them are available to us, and then it reads that if you want certain ones, then of, of course, there's a cost associated.
Sure. As you can see from the accountants that told you, we had a 96 system, not, it's 1996, it's 2020 right now. So that's what we're, we're doing a lot of, we're, we're working hard to get to where we, I mean, in the same, same way with enrollment, you know, we need to be doing things online and things like that. Just a lot of, a lot of things that we need to be doing, that we've not been doing.
Yep.
And then, you know, companies size of ADP has spent a lot of money on cybersecurity.
Any questions for me?
Does he have a quick question?
Yeah.
So how does it affect, of course, it's a big company, like, when we have a snow day, of course, maintenance awards when everybody else is gone?
Yeah.
Does that address that too?
Nope, we'll take care of that in-house. So we still are required to have a payroll specialist, so in the proposed plan, I'll move Sidney Forster, who's our payroll supervisor, she'll become an HR, she'll become 50, basically. I get to give her some more HR functions, again, freeing up my time a little bit more for some other things, more administrative. And so she'll be still the HR payroll specialist is what we've kind of talked about. And so she would administer the timekeeping piece. So just like a student forgetting to clock out for eight hours, Sidney will still be there. We still have an administrator on our end that'll be able to make adjustments and notes. Mm-hmm, yeah. And then also for reporting, the best thing is that we can give limited access to other managers on campus. So like our financial aid director, I can give her access to certain things and she can build her own financial aid reports for exactly what she needs, because we've met already twice about reports that we can build to give to her, and she's seen some of our reports, so she knows the limitations of our system that we've run into. So she can be able to log on herself and just type in exactly how she wants it and build that report, so she can have what she needs for the feds, which was really appealing as well. Because right now, we just call up Mike and Tyson in IT and ask them, please, can you build this? And they have to build a script and it takes a little while, so. Any other questions?
Kristi, how does this affect our drivers who are, I mean, we're still on pure paper logs?
Mm-hmm. Well, there's a mobile app. Well, also in J1, we could catch you off the logs as well. So the logs are really just kind of a personal choice. We can adjust that at any time. We can set up a schedule in the app, and then this also will have a mobile app, which J1's timekeeping system did not. They only have desktop only. So that's a huge issue for our student workers when they're out on the road for a game or whatever other events that they're off-campus working, they can't clock in and out, which is an issue. So the mobile app would be able to use, and so you could build in a schedule for your drivers, and when you assign them, it's already in there.
Does it have integration ability? Should we ever move to ELD compliance on our buses?
It should. They, there's part of the software is they stay up-to-date on federal reporting. Obviously, I'm not aware of what the changes are coming to the T yet, so that, when that comes, we can, and we can build it.
Lot more options, of course, if you would.
Right.
Note to self, you guys, when we give a snow day, that doesn't, that doesn't, that should not affect Arizona, okay? Dr. John, Dr. John told me that. He said, you know, when it's, when it's, snow days for us, it was 65 degrees there. So the pilots were saying, do we fly today? That's a true story.
So then also in your packets is then obviously the master agreement and Attorney Kerbs' points that he provides to the company and then their addendum that they provided for us to make sure we're in state compliance.
If you can check the weather in Arizona, they can have a four, I was just.
Can that be the campus by email? Due to weather in Arizona, we will not have a snow day.
Never thought of it. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we.
Listen, man, we haven't even heard from Glenn.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's, he's looked over the contract.
Maybe you'd have some questions.
We've just got it tonight.
If you look at what Carla left at your, at your place, if you go back towards the very back, there's a couple of letters with, from me to Kristi. And if you'd look at the letter dated February 21, 2020, I, I want to make a couple, this, this is more of a general comment so that you kind of know where we come from when we take a look at contracts. School districts and community college have certain statutory limitations on their contracts. And some are absolutely prohibited, some provisions are absolutely prohibited, some provisions are provisions that the board can waive, okay? And I don't know, I, the DA 146A form, I don't think we've included it, but that's a state Department of Administration form, and it's attached to every state of Kansas contract. And it lists on, it lists on this DA 146A certain requirements if you're doing business with the state of Kansas. And what the legislature has said is that community colleges and school districts must incorporate the provisions of the 146A in their contracts unless the Board of Trustees decide that, no, we're not gonna use, we're gonna allow that provision that would be otherwise prohibited by the 146A, we're gonna allow that in our contract, okay? And then statutorily, there's also certain things that I said, you can't do. Number one, you can't agree to indemnify another party, okay? Number two, you can't agree to be governed by the laws of the state of New York or any other state. They must be governed by the laws of state of Kansas. Any jurisdictional issues have to be dealt with in the state of Kansas. And so we get this contract and it says that it has a client indemnity provision in it. It also says that if you bring any kind of case or any kind of action on the contract, you must do it in the state of New York or in the federal district courts in New York. And so we notified them, we said, look, we can't, we can't agree to an indemnity provision because we're prohibited and we can't have us governed by the laws of the state of New York. And they agreed to change both of those, okay? So those mandatory provisions are gone. Then if you look at that letter, there's some discretionary things, things that would be prohibited by the DA 146A, which tonight, you can, you can say, we understand that, but we want to go forward with this contract. And let me just, let me just run through the, since this is the first time that, you know, we've really looked at one with the new board members, but on page two, if you, of my letter dated February 21, paragraph number two talks about limit of liability and no consequential damages. Under the DA 146A, you can't limit liability and you can't, you can't limit the number of, the amount of, or the type of damages that you might be able to otherwise recover. So what, and what, what ADP does is they, they, they put a cap on what, if you're unhappy with them, you got a problem, then you can recover X amount of dollars. And what, how they do it is they say you can recover up to six months of what your subscription fee is. And I think it's about a $40,000 a year arrangement, right, Kristi?
Say it again.
It's about a $40,000.
Yes, just shy.
So what you'd be allowed to do is you'd be able to recover up to $20,000, okay? And then if there's certain extraordinary damages, you can recover up to one year or $40,000, and that's it. That's all you got, okay? And so, and this is not uncommon to see, and the, the response you get from a company is, the reason we put those caps on there is because if it's uncapped, then we're gonna have to charge you a lot more than $40,000. So it's kind of a, a catch-22. What ADP did, and behind the February 21 letter, we got a new addendum from them, and I'm not sure, is the addendum.
I think the addendum's before your February 21st.
Before my letter.
I apologize, yeah.
That's okay. That's good. So we got.
February 25th letter now?
Yeah, the February 25th letter, we got that last night, or yesterday afternoon late, and so we looked at it this morning. And they have made modifications. They still have certain caps. They've added to the warranty, but they still have certain limitations on the warranty. They, they changed the New York, Kansas, and they changed, they, they took out the, the indemnity provision. So everything that is left in the contract, the board can approve. All the, you can't do this has been removed. And so the modifications have been made. And, and probably the most, again, you know, the most important thing to realize of all this is that if there's an issue, you have a certain limitation on what you're able to recover. And the maximum that you can recover now is up to 24 months or $80,000, okay? So any questions about that? But I just want you to be aware that, that's why we look at these contracts, because there are certain, especially kind of software contracts or contracts that we receive from, you know, out of state, they obviously would prefer to do business in, or if they're going to court, they'd rather go at home. Well, so would we. And the legislature said, and you should be able to if you're a community college, so.
I understand the capping part, but is, is there, I mean, in doing that, is there any way litigation, if they didn't have those caps, you would have, have just cause to go after more than that, than that, or?
Well, I suppose you could challenge whether the cap is a, you know, even a, a practical kind of thing to have, but, you know, we're sitting here, we're talking about it, they made adjustments to it.
Yeah.
Probably like you're gonna be, and, and of course, the first issue I have is, okay, you said, what, it's a million dollar a month payroll?
Payroll, yes.
And, you know, we all know the pitfalls of payroll. I mean, you know, we, we're, we're an office of seven and we outsource our payroll because we don't want to mess with the payroll. And so I get that, but, you know, there's lots of things that can go wrong with payroll and all the other things that, you know, the privacy things that you've talked about. And so that's the only thing that troubled me was, you know, gosh, that's a, that's a, seems like a small cap if, if something should go wrong.
Yeah, that was a swerve, that's okay. That's standard to the industry.
Yes, yeah.
Something you've told me twice, you were worried about payroll in the last few months.
Well, it's just been, obviously going to J1 has required, our comp time in my department right now is more than it's probably ever been because with the J1 conversion, we're one of the only departments, us and the business services, none of our stuff got pulled over. So we manually entered every single employee, every single student, everything over the last several months. Then the first, we didn't get it done in time for a fake go-live in November because they were still having issues. The GL was still getting fixed, so we didn't get to do our practice runs. So January, we ran the first payroll in the new system, like, basically completely blind, like, here we go. Let's check and check and check and check. Luckily, our due diligence paid off and it was okay. And then with only having one payroll clerk, right now, I don't have the HR administrative assistant trained in a way that she could be back up to payroll. It's something that if we weren't gonna outsource, was gonna need to happen. But when I lost my other payroll clerk for her to go take care of her family in Oklahoma, again, this position continually becomes vacant. And I'm left with one payroll clerk in the last several years. Unfortunately, she has had health concerns and there's been a few times that I'm like, oh my gosh, I don't know if everybody's getting paid this month. And so it's just, there's just a lot kind of riding on it and a lot of changes and things. So this is a, this will be a big difference.
And payroll's just an accident waiting to happen. I mean, that's just payroll. And everyone who gets a check counts on getting that check. You can't go and say, hey, we'll do this next week, you know? Because people cannot.
Yes, we pay once a month, every month on the 25th unless that's a holiday or weekend.
That's really important, yeah.
Yeah, and, and they'll save money, not just in time, but just on mistakes, but I just would verify if you're unhappy with them, which I know you got a month a month here, right?
Yeah, it says that we have, if we want to terminate at any time or if they want to terminate, we give them a 90-day notice.
90-day notice.
So how do you get your data?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's, there's a.
And so we will have to run out of the J1 system. Obviously, there's the inflammation time. We're hoping to start right away. We'll probably have to keep running out of J1, which is gonna be rough till, I think probably about May. We could probably go live with the, with ADP in May, but I don't want, I don't think it's a good idea to train all of the students on a new app just before they go on summer vacation. And the supervisors, it just seems like wasted effort. So we might kind of just bear with it and try to get through May and then try to go live with ADP, maybe June.
Will you handle the questions if the checks are wrong or is there a number for them to call?
Both.
Both, okay.
For the most part, it's, it's us. There, we do still hold liability. Like I said, we, we'll still review every payroll before we hit the go button. And so we'll still, we'll still have our edits, we'll still have our changes, we'll